Classy San Diego, sponsored by Max Lux Media with your host being myself, Steve Wire, a freelance reporter affiliated with The Coast News, North Coast Current, among other organizations. I'd like to welcome our two guests today. We have Bruce Ayers on the right and we have Pamela Riddella on the left, or Dr. Pamela Riddella, I should say. And I just want to introduce our guests a little bit. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with you, Bruce. So Bruce is a 38-year resident. He's lived in Village Park and New Encinitas for eight years before he moved to Leavenhein. He and his wife Beth raised three daughters here and he's been an active volunteer in Encinitas for over 25 years. Bruce has a number of accomplishments. He wrote Proposition A, the Right to Vote Initiative, which was passed by Encinitas voters in 2013. Bruce was chairman of the Planning Commission where he served on for seven years. And Bruce has held various leadership positions on the Leavenhein Town Council. He was vice president, membership chairman, and Encinitas Task Force Chairman for the council. And during his decades-long tenure as membership chair, he grew a membership to a hive of 500 families. And Bruce was instrumental in starting the original cinema series fundraiser, which provides initial funding to restore the Leavenhein Hotel. Now I'd like to turn to you, Pam. Pam's lived in North County for her entire life. And she was born in Escondido, raised in San Marcos and Lucadia. And she began her adult life in coastal North County about 35 years ago. And as the first in her family to go to college, she was able to complete a PhD in Spanish literature, language, and culture. And she now teaches as a university professor at CSU San Marcos, where she teaches women's gender and sexuality studies. Is that correct? And she has her husband of 20 years and has raised her children all in District Four, specifically in Village Park. Pam has been an active PTA mom and neighbor since they moved into their townhome in 2004. And they've developed deep friendships with many Leavenhein neighbors through years of baseball and soccer, as well as through her husband's volunteer work as the LLCC surf team manager. So that's a bit about our two candidates today for city council District Four. And I'm gonna get right into some questions here. So I'm gonna start with the one that you probably both all expect the most, which is the Goodson Project. And I just want to say off the top that this project, obviously, it's gotten the green light. It's going through. It's moving forward. But that doesn't mean we can't still talk about it, analyze what are its anticipated impacts on the city, on Leavenhein. And so I just want to talk about that for a minute. So with each of you, and I'll start with you, Pam, I want you to talk a bit about whether you supported this project and why or why not. And I also want you to address during the course of your response whether you're concerned at all by the project's potential impacts on infrastructure, traffic, fire safety, environmental concerns, those sorts of things. But first of all, just, you know, did you support the project to begin with?
Well, I would have supported the project had it done what it originally said it was gonna do, which, to my understanding, was going to be about 150 unit assisted living facility for our seniors. That would have been something possibly ideal for that spot in the sense that it would have minimal traffic impact since seniors aren't driving all over the place, and half the size. And, and the, you know, the issue right now is definitely alarming. I'm not looking forward to the extra traffic. I'm worried about fire safety and evacuation safety on McCain. And I share all of the concerns that the residents have about that project.
Sure, absolutely. Bruce, did you support the project? Why or why not?
No, no, and not only that, it's probably on its fifth or sixth iteration. I've been fighting Randy Goodson on that property since 2004. He bought an interest in it in 2005, but I first met with him and his partner Simon Malk in 2004, where he proposed 250 units oddly, and then eventually backed off to 150, and then it sat dormant for a while. And he came back with several iterations before he finally did the bait and switch, most recently with the 150-some-unit senior center that then, as soon as it got approved, became this 200, well, first 77, actually 283, then 277, et cetera. So, no, I've opposed it as being inappropriate for a number of reasons. Probably first and foremost would be evacuation during a wildfire. There is quite a bit of traffic that would go down Rancho Santa Fe Road, and adding almost 50% to the traffic load at that spot, if you look at the Fitch Report, they have a traffic model, and there's about, at peak, 700 cars on Rancho Santa Fe right there. And this would generate up to 500 cars coming out. And so it, it just didn't make sense from a safety standpoint. So I completely disagree with the, would have been the Fire Chief's recommendation that this is acceptable and safe. And it was interesting that he said the evacuation plan was fine and turned around within a month and basically started an update to the evacuation plan, which is in process right now. And the city council approved that update. So, so no, I haven't supported it. Now, obviously, it was recused, so I wasn't involved in the deliberation, but I was involved behind the scenes with the city attorney's approval, with working with ERRD.
Sure. Pam, do you have any thoughts? I mean, I know that one of the things that really concerns a lot of people at Goodson, and projects that might go in Leavenhein and years beyond Goodson, is the fire safety issue, wildfire evacuation safety, sort of how will people be, you know, ingress and egress? Like, how is that gonna work? You know, and there's just a lot of related concerns there. So I'm just curious to know, sort of, if elected to the city council, now that Goodson already has the green light, sort of, how would you approach it? How would you maybe make some modifications or some policy recommendations to improve safety for Leavenhein residents?
Yeah, I think we need to work really closely with our fire experts on that. And, and of course, the Mobility Commission to see what we can do about the traffic flow, about possible areas, like during an evacuation. I know that we have some, some streets that are, that are blocked off, that we can't, you know, they're only like one way. I'm thinking of the street that goes over
Opossum.
Yeah, by Deganio. And, you know, like, opening those, those areas up during an evacuation, making sure that people are well-informed about, you know, what's going on with fire season, so that we can give people proper timing, proper notice, and really just educating people and focusing on the fact that when, when fire season is here, get yourself ready, right? That we can't have people waiting till the last minute, that the more prepared people are, the more we can educate people on where they can go and, and like, okay, it's time, let's get going. I think we can, I think we can be successful in that. But it's gonna involve a lot of community effort and working with our fire professionals.
Bruce, do you sort of agree to agree with that approach?
Yeah, that's part of it. I was, I've lived in my house 30 years, and so I was here during the 1997, I think it was Harmony Grove Fire. And that's one where you could see the fire actually coming down the hillside in Rancho Santa Fe. Luckily for us, unfortunately for La Costa, the wind switched and it headed that way and burned quite a few houses in La Costa. My experience kind of informs my decision in that I was watching horse trailers coming out of 13th Street. There are quite a few houses and there were quite a few horses back there. And I, and I, we watched that night as truck after truck made multiple trips back there. And so the evacuation plan I talked about, it's being updated. It's not being updated to include Goodson. It should be. It's now an approved project. It really doesn't take into account horses and large animal evacuation like it should. And it also doesn't take fully into account the Rancho Santa Fe residents that live just beyond our border. It puts what they called a friction factor, but I don't believe it really took into account that evacuation volume, which will be additive, because obviously, they're not going towards the fire. They're gonna come to the west and try and go down Rancho Santa Fe. And so I think the, what has to happen is much better planning in order to be prepared. And I don't think we're on that track yet. But luckily, we've done some good steps, like the Fire Safe Council. I think that's a group of citizens, primarily in Leavenhein, but anywhere in Encinitas, that have joined together to help that, help the Fire Department plan. So I think that's on the right track.
Absolutely. So Goodson's obviously a big one, but there's obviously the other HGU projects as well to discuss. I want to talk about a few of those. As you know, the Clark Project recently did receive the green light as well from the city council. We have the Baldwin Project, which I believe is 485 units. That's coming into Encinitas pretty soon as well, if it gets approved. You know, it's still an F, the Planning Commission's still mulling it over. But yeah, that. And then we also have Maria Village, which, which got the green light, I believe, in August. So I just want to talk a bit about, you know, and we'll, we'll start with you, Pam, just sort of, how, how much do these projects concern you in terms of their impacts on infrastructure? And what's sort of the, on a larger scale, like, what is the correct approach between balancing these infrastructure concerns with the need for affordable housing, with making Encinitas an affordable place to live? But you can just sort of, you know, pick any of those projects and sort of talk it through, like, how, what would your approach look like?
Yeah, I mean, I really think that Maria Village is an example of, of something that we can do in working with developers on the projects that they're bringing in, that Maria Village is working with the city on infrastructure and throwing in, like, certain elements, right? Like, taking that on for themselves as, as a goodwill gesture for, okay, you know, the city's negotiating with us and letting us do this project here. And they've got, you know, infrastructure issues, we can, the least we can do is help on that. And, and be the ones to install the, because I know that with the Maria Village piece, they're, they're gonna, like, finish the streetscape up to La Costa and do a lot of work with the storm drainage so that it doesn't, as it doesn't flow down into the bluffs and further compromise our sea bluffs, you know, having things go to storm drains instead of down just naturally onto the bluff. And, and we can, we can push that, I think. I think we can do a lot more work with the developers to, to force them to help out with, with the infrastructure needs that their, that their projects bring. Because it's not, I just don't, I don't find it fair or reasonable that they say, well, you know, I'm just building right here and that's all I need to worry about. It's like, no, you're coming into a community. We need to, to look at things holistically.
Bruce, out of the projects that I mentioned, does anyone spring to mind for you in terms of level of concern or how concerned we should be and how to balance that with the, how to balance affordability with, with state mandates and all that?
So, yeah, as far as infrastructure, to answer that question first, I look at the cumulative effect particularly on Northwest Lucadia, and to a lesser extent, because it's so big compared to Leavenhein, the Goodson Project on Leavenhein. But let's start with just Lucadia. Lucadia is, what, there's 1967, the El Maria, there's Fox Point Farms, there's Baldwin, there's Sunshine, there's Clark Street, there's Pyreus. Those are all in Northwest Lucadia. And it was approved under what was called a programmatic EIR for the, all 15 together. And unfortunately, when it went through, they didn't, the city council did not put in certain mitigations that would have been helpful, that would, if they had, that they could have enforced that environmental review and environmental infrastructure be, be fixed as part of the mitigation for this. So lacking it there, they have no mechanisms for it right now. Therefore, it is up to the city now to fund that and do it. And I support funding, I'll give you a good example, would be Quail Gardens Drive is going to need traffic mitigation, calming, and that type of stuff. So I think now, since the city missed the chance to put the requirement on the developers, that, that they need to now actually allocate budget to go do it themselves. And we do as a city. And I think Northwest Lucadia is ground zero. It's the epicenter of so many of these huge projects. And then there's probably similar type of mitigation that has to be done near Rancho Santa Fe and Encinitas Boulevard. And there may be around some of the others to a much lesser extent.
Sure. So, one, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, was there a second half to that question? I wasn't sure. Do you want to ask it again?
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second. But I, I just want to touch on the point you made about Northwest Lucadia. There's a lot of sense by Lucadians in particular that that part of the city gets sort of unfairly hammered with the R30 projects. And in particular, on our, one of the last podcast episodes we did, the topic came up that, you know, are there alternative places? Is there other room to build? Does it have to be in Northwest Lucadia? And I'm just curious to get your take on that as to whether you think Lucadia is sort of being singled out as a part of this housing element?
I think in what was adopted by the city council was essentially Measure U, even though it was defeated by the voters, was unusually heavily weighted into Lucadia and Northwest Lucadia in particular. It's water under the bridge at this point. It's been adopted and approved. And, you know, I don't know how, you can't undo it, not with state law the way it is right now.
Sure, absolutely. So I have an next question for you, Pam. So I received an interesting comment from a resident when I told him I was gonna be doing this interview. And I said, one question that they, they really wanted addressed was, you know, the fact that we're near 40% renters in the city. It's hard to find a place for less than 3,000 in many cases. And so what could the city be doing to make this a more affordable place to live? But the second part of that question is how, what do you believe the city's role is in terms of pushing back against state mandates? Are these state mandates the right approach? Are, are they, are they good for our city? But how does the city sort of balance that with the need to improve affordable housing and maintain local control? I know, that's a huge question, but...
Yeah. Well, I mean, the rental market, you know, is something that's, that's, like it says, it's market-driven. I mean, they're, aside from, from enacting rent control, which we know homeowners and landowners would, you know, revolt over, that's not, that, that doesn't seem realistic. And so affordable housing is the only way to go, to be able to get a portion of, of our, of our units available to people who can't, you know, who can't afford. And when we, when we think of people who can't afford, we have to think of who that is in Encinitas, and that's our nurses, firefighters, teachers, and our college kids coming home, you know, and wanting to live near their parents, and our seniors who want to age in place. And so it's not the invading hordes that a lot of people are trying to, like, whip up fear and, and around. That, that part is really a sensitive thing for me. And, and so as far as, you know, what's, where the, the units are located and how this is going down, and, you know, we have all these big projects, blah, 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 I really think we need to look at, I enjoy that we have Prop A, because it's something that folks can have a voice in, and local control is really important. And however, it has also had an unintended consequence of kicking the can. And, and now, these projects are a lot of, a result of that. And so we need to, we need to think about that. And, and when we go forward, really work on purposeful engagement with voters so that they know exactly what they're voting on, and engagement with the projects as they, as they're being developed so that people can, you know, can have more input, right? And it's not that there's not availability for input. I just don't know that, that the average person who's just trying to live their life here is, is as informed as they could be. And so that's something that I would want to work on as a councilperson. And, and overall, I mean, I'm for redesigning a lot of spaces that we have, and, and doing updates to make things more energy efficient, to, to, to do a little bit of density that's not, that's not, you know, out of control. And I think that we can do that by, especially, I'm thinking about El Comune Real, right? The, the plan that's going on, that folks can, or that the Strategic Planning Committee itself can put in standards and, and with, and what's the, the other, not ERRD, what's that other measure about building and our voices?
Oh, our neighborhood voices.
Yes, that one. Our neighborhood voices. Reading that one, you know, I really liked the idea of us being able to say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll take what the state is, is offering us, and/or, you know, telling us we need to do, and making sure that we have plans in place that, that we can control what it looks like. And we can control how big or small that it actually ends up being. And this is what, you know, Prop A was sort of meant to do. But I think we've, we've wasted a ton of money on, on projects that were planned, like, lots of money and planning and time go into the measures that get put on the ballot. And when folks aren't super informed and they just see building and they go, ugh, no, that results in, you know, it's, it's, the can has been kicked, and now we're dealing with big projects that we didn't want.
Sure. So Bruce, two huge questions. One is...
Do I get to answer that one?
Go ahead.
I think there are some things that I need to comment on. So, so first of all, Prop A, what is Prop A and what wasn't it? Prop A was basically taking out an exception that was in the, in the general plan. General plan had a requirement for a vote of the people anytime we changed zoning, increased zoning. It was already in there, but it had a, an exception that said if there was a four-fifth supermajority of the council that made a finding of public benefit, quote, "public benefit," that they could bypass that vote. And that's what happened. I'll give you, and it happened a dozen times over the course of the city. And it was, I remember one justification one night, the mayor said, oh, not, not a current mayor, but a long-ago-passed mayor, said, oh, it adds houses. That, that's a public benefit. If you put that same question to the majority voters, they would not agree. And so what we need to start thinking of is a significant public benefit. If you're gonna have a Prop A vote, you need to have the corresponding or commensurate public benefit uphark. What are you funding? And we can get in, I assume you'll ask something about El Comune Real, because we can go more into that, and I can give, use that as an example. But we gotta have some carrot in there for the people to get them to vote. So let's talk about Measure T that we defeated, because it was too much, too tall, and, and too dense. And in the end, we defeated it. We then had huge public involvement, and I was on a task force with the mayor, with Tony Carrans and Kurt Glosskos. And we spent 20-some meetings going over that, all public meetings with public involvement. But in the end, when it got back to city council, they reverted right back to essentially Measure T, and it was called Measure U. So if you do a side-by-side comparison of the buffer size, of the density, of the max height, Measure U was exactly like Measure T. And to be surprised that you would get a different vote is naive. And so we, and I ended up opposing Measure T and Measure U because of that reason. So the problem was not Prop A. Prop A was really just changing that exception. The problem was the council didn't put the right deal in front of the people. They tried to go too far, too tall, and too dense.
Sure. So I, since you mentioned the El Comune Real specific plan, let's go ahead and talk about that. So Pam, I'll address this to you. Do you have, like, sort of, I'd say, ideal vision for this plan? Like, if you could, you know, have unlimited fiat power and make it the way you want it to be, what would that look like? And second of all, I want to ask, do you believe that, you know, let's say, so there's a Prop A vote that's probably required for density changes, but if voters reject the version of the plan that's offered, would you vote to overturn this decision if it was to meet state mandates? So I know that's kind of a mouthy question, so I can say it again if you want. But just first of all, like, just kind of talk about your, your sort of vision for the plan, what it would look like in a perfect world for you?
Yeah, in a perfect world for me, I would like to have a redesign that we're able to connect all of the, the different shopping centers, right? And, and remodel those to have retail on the bottom and maybe two stories. I don't think we should go three, because that would make it a four-story building. I would think two stories on top of one story of retail. And, you know, to, to encourage, and then, of course, that's gonna have walking paths and biking paths that I would want them to be, like, elevated away from El Comune Real, so that it's much safer. Because there's no getting away from El Comune Real being a thoroughfare. It's, it's been that way for decades, my entire life, and it's gonna stay that way. And so we just need to deal with that. And, and micro parks, like, we can have places where, where the, in each dwelling, you know, area where there's dwellings that there's, that there's opens, you know, even if it's micro, open space for people to enjoy, and those trails along for biking and walking and a, you know, a different, there's so, I think we can, we can put in, like, even like an alleyway that would connect the shopping centers and the, and the living spaces so that it relieves some of the traffic from El Comune Real itself. So that's what, and, and of course, you know, making sure that the design is nice and that the people approve the design. And, and, you know, it's not gonna be monstrous skyscrapers. I would never propose that for people in Encinitas. Nobody would go for that. And that, as a resident, I wouldn't want that myself. We want to keep our cute little beach town feel, right? And so if the voters vote it down after us doing as much work as we possibly can to educate people as to why we need this, and that it is in the city's best interest to do this, we need to modernize what we have, make the best use of what we have, then, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not for overturning a vote of the people. I'm for re-engaging. And, and even though that, that will, again, kick a can, it might be necessary.
Sure. So Bruce, again, the question is, you know, what's your perfect world scenario for this plan? And the second part is, you know, would you vote to overturn a, if the voters reject the plan, would you vote to sort of overturn that to meet state mandates?
So, let's see, my vision is, I don't even understand why we're doing it. And, and so at the, and I've been attending each and every one of, I think I missed one or two, of the eight meetings we've had for the task force and for the workshops for the, for this specific plan. First of all, you can't, the council can't overturn a vote of the people. Only a vote of the people can change a vote of the people. So they, they can't turn around and do that. Second of all, the vision, it's been interesting in, on the, I think it would have been the September, or, no, it was a meeting in August, no, September, that one of the staff members made a comment that, and very statement, that this is not needed for economic viability. She said that it's, the corridor is economically viable. In a prior, in the August 2nd meeting, Roy Sapow, the department head for development and engineering, said that this is not needed, not needed for housing element. So, wow. And unfortunately, public comments, because of the way it was organized, which I think was poor, had pushed public comments to the very end. So anything said in public comments was summarily ignored and, and not discussed. But I raised my hand and said, okay, I now know, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are two reasons why this is not needed, but I don't know the reason we do need it. So far, the only thing I've seen is to beautify the corridor and provide walkability. And so let's talk about interconnection. Our current general plan covers this very, very clearly. You know, I've been, I have, I've had the fortune to serve twice on the Planning Commission, and on the first time, back 20 years ago, almost, the, that we were putting in, right next to the 777 Medical Building, we were putting in the cancer center there. And in our general plan are the policies that they should, all the roads, the parking lots should be interconnected. I had to fight tooth and nail as a new planning commissioner to get that connection between the Easterly parking lot of the cancer center off of Gardendale through, to cut through to 777. And eventually, it then got cut through all the way over to Michael's and that. And I think that's the vision. The laws are already in place. We don't need a specific plan. And that's one advantage I think I have. I have seven total years on Planning Commission. I know the practicality of what specific plans, how they work and how they don't work. And I fear what we're doing is, is essentially lighting a development fuse. We're going to enable development of, I forget how many hundreds of acres, that would release up to 8,000 additional housing units on that corridor and the corresponding population and traffic. And it's gonna cause gridlock. And it won't get developed, it'll get developed piecemeal. And so I just, I don't see the vision. I don't see the need. Nobody has really said why we need literally hundreds of millions of dollars of development profits, that part of that could get plowed back into the, the development and to improve it. But I don't see that there is that much need, given that it's not for the housing element, and it's not for economic viability. So I really don't support the plan as it is stated today.
Sure. Pam, do you like to offer rebuttal, or are we gonna move on?
Well, the only thing I would add is that I feel, I think a lot of the, the plans there are also connected to the Climate Action Plan in the sense that it's about electrifying buildings and, and moving away from natural gas and trying to, I mean, personally, I live there and I go up and down that corridor all the time. And there are so many just old and frankly decrepit buildings, and there's things that have been sitting empty. And we, you know, we don't have a lot of options for our youth to recreate in the area. And so, you know, there's, something's gotta happen, because it's, I don't know, for me, for me, there's a lot of improvement that needs to be done.
And I think I can agree on a point you made. There, the mattress store, I've been there forever, never understood, you know, what it's doing. Yeah, so it totally doesn't make sense. But I don't understand the need to do an overlay from, all the way from LA Fitness, all the way up to Walmart, the entire commercial corridor, we're doing, you know, essentially what is currently proposed, and it's only proposed, and it has to go to a Prop A vote, but it's an R30 overlay on top of the commercial. And if you ask the developers, and I have asked the, one of the developers on the committee, what he's looking for. He's looking for mid-rise, and I believe he's actually looking 40 to 60 units an acre. Now, I don't believe the council would give him that, so that's good. I think, you know, it'll be R30, but always remember, R30 is, is 30 units per acre, but density bonus is 45 units per acre. So, you know, it's really gonna be closer to 45 units an acre. So we just have to be careful. So what I would consider is, we, we seem to have anchors at both ends that are, I'll say, economically viable. And in the case of the Ralph Center, the parking is pretty well-used up, and, and it's very vibrant and whatnot. And even across the street, same thing. But there may be a couple of places in the middle that, that's the place you should, we should look at where it, it's not quite as performing as well. The buildings are older. And maybe we look at much smaller bites of rezoning. And, but you have to work out that, that carrot, that apple that we give the people, what kind of micro parks, that kind of stuff. I haven't seen that in any of the planning. I haven't seen that in any of the planning. When you went to the, when I went to the workshops, it, do you want three story buildings here? Four story buildings here? Do you want small little four story buildings? Or do you want big four story buildings? So, and then the final thing is the electrification and, and, you know, buildings have a, a life and, and they get reinvested in periodically. This corridor will not get suddenly reinvested instantaneously unless we make it so lucrative for the developers, much like we did for the R fifteens, uh, R thirties, sorry. That we, that's why we have ten of those, at least ten of those already either approved or in the throes of approval out of fifteen. That's an incredibly fast turnaround. The electrification, I think is a very good point that, um, I, I'll ask a question. How many buildings of the cities, uh, city buildings, major city buildings have photovoltaic solar on top? One. And it was done fifteen years ago. So my first question is, why aren't we electrifying our own buildings? They're retrofits, they're easy to do. I did it in my house, you probably done it on your house and everybody does because it pays, pays off. And the capital you put into that would be paid back within six, seven years easily just from the cost of the electricity. And as electricity and energy goes up higher and higher, it, it's going to pay back quicker. So.
You guys want to talk about streetscape?
Sure.
Okay. Pam, so same question I've been asking to candidates for the last couple of weeks since we started this podcast, you know?
And to be fair, if she wants me to go first occasionally, I, please speak up.
Okay. I, I, it's really fine.
It's, uh, there's two questions here. One is, you know, was this a wise investment to begin with? But secondly, given that this is happening, you know, I think we're, we're moving into phase two right now, if I'm not mistaken. You know, people are concerned, you know, they're concerned about the narrowing of the one-on-one in certain areas. You know, they're concerned about how that impacts, uh, emergency vehicle response times. I wrote a story on that a few months ago. People are concerned about, um, the bike lanes. So I guess my question is for you, um, if elected to the city council, um, you know, was this a good investment? But now that this is happening, how would you handle it? Make modifications moving forward? What would your policy approach there be?
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty. I do, I do. I, I have to say that. I, I like the way that the, that the parking is a lot, it's easier on the east side now to park, uh, when you're, when you're frequenting businesses. I think people have a misunderstanding of how the bike lanes work, that, that it's not that the cars cannot drive in the lane that has the, the bikes written on it, it's just share. If there's a bike there, move over. It's not that difficult to do. And, um, and I really think that once things are finished with, with more rail crossings for pedestrians, that we'll see the true benefit of what this, this, um, this project was, was meant to do. Because, um, I think we're seeing it already with the El Portal crossing for, for the elementary school that we don't have, there, that's like a couple hundred cars not coming around and having to drive around in the morning. And so the congestion, because I drive down there a lot to, to work out with a friend. And, um, and I'd go in the mornings before that crossing was there and I would, I would do all kinds of round back roads to get to my friend's house on Neptune. And now with the undercrossing, it's a breeze, right at seven thirty, seven forty-five. It's really not a problem. And so, um, I think that once all of the, everything's all done, we're going to understand and see, and people just need to adapt to the, to the new, to the new flow. And I know that roundabouts are new and different, people don't quite understand them. But, um, it really does keep traffic flowing. If you slow down enough and yield to people and everyone just kind of friendly drives through, it's, you know, it, it's an improvement and it's another one of those things that has to do with cutting down on the stopping and going and emissions from cars.
Sure. So Bruce, to you, um, I want to address again, you know, was this a prudent investment? But, uh, I have, in addition to the story I wrote, I have people all the time sending me photos of emergency vehicles stuck in traffic, of congestion. Um, I, I think it's been blamed for a number of different accidents, um, already. So I, I just want to get a sense from you of like, you know, again, whether or not you oppose this project, assuming it goes forward, again, what would your approach be? And in addition to whether this was a good investment or not?
I think it is going forward, right? So, yeah. First of all, I voted for it.
Yeah.
On planning commission. Now, planning commission, I, I wasn't the, I'll say policy board at that point, I would be on the city council. Yeah, and so some of the nuances I, I didn't argue with because they were set by the, the city council, such as the number of, uh, uh, roundabouts. And, you know, I, I'm always reminded, one of my favorite quotes is, uh, Mark Twain, he says, "If your only tool is a hammer, everything begins to look like a nail." And some days I feel that's the way we use, uh, roundabouts. Oh, that needs a roundabout and you need a roundabout. You know, it's like Oprah with the roundabouts. And, and so I probably wouldn't have gone as heavy on the roundabouts. But I think roundabouts are very appropriate, especially when you transition from four lane commercial to more of a two lane, uh, business district or residential, such as on, uh, Lucadia Boulevard coming into Lucadia, such as Santa Fe going into, uh, Cardiff. Uh, I think very appropriate there. And there are probably one or two places along one-on-one that would have been appropriate. I wouldn't have put as many in. The number one, uh, attribute of streetscape I liked was the trees. Uh, I remember Lucadia with the tree canopy. And that's, that's where we, and, and most of my decision, you'll, if you go back and look at tapes of the planning commission, you'll hear me say, what's it going to look like in fifty years? I, I'm all about looking down the road. And so planting a tree forest, if you will, or re- re-canopying the, uh, Lucadia area on one-on-one, to me, that is a prime interest to me. And so that was one of the main reasons I voted yes on this project. The, the lane, let's see, I've got to get my terms correctly. Removing a lane or partially removing, I guess, removing a lane southbound and, and partly northbound because it's down to one lane already in one part of northbound, um, I probably don't agree with. But I do understand it too. I, I'm, because that right lane southbound was always, I'll say encumbered by bicycles, encumbered by cars coming in and out. So I think the new parking, I agree, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting to learn to use it, but I think it, it's fundamentally a good idea. And, um, I'm going to compare and contrast this, what was passed in this streetscape versus the downtown, essentially, um, what do they call it? Main street improvements. I thought that downtown was almost optimal. It was a light touch and it, it cleaned up and it, and it provided popouts and it really made it more pedestrian friendly, prettier, had a facade improvement. I think we maybe didn't quite hit the mark as well here, but a lot of the features and improvements do fit in that same mold and I support them. So I had a bit of mixed emotions, but in the end I did vote for it because that, that's what you do on a, on a council or commission. There are compromises you have to make.
Sure.
And so this is one I voted for.
But if I can just interject there, Bruce, so, uh, I, in my, the, the story I was referencing, you know, we, we interviewed multiple fire safety experts, multiple retired firefighters, uh, you know, retired, uh, you know, ambulance drivers, that sort of thing. And they all told me the same thing, which was that this project, um, worries them, you know, like an eight or a nine or a ten out of ten, like.
Interesting.
So I, I'm just curious, like for, for people who, for whom that is still concerned, the emergency vehicle issue, um, sort of how would you either modify the project or like, um, like what, what's sort of your response to that particular issue?
Well, really in the end, that, there isn't asphalt, that much asphalt being taken away. So you, you have the turn in the, the backend lane, if you will. So I think there'll still be plenty of room to get trucks by. And it's interesting, were, were they the same people that approved the, uh, um, the evacuation plan or said the evacuation plan was sufficient on Rancho Santa Fe Road to get out of, I, I, it seems like a double standard there to me. One, one is clearly going to be a problem and, and this one, it's there, they're saying it may be. You know, I, I don't see it as, as a, I think there's enough asphalt there for, for essentially an emergency vehicle to get by.
Okay.
You know, and, and the places where it would choke would be, where it chokes down for the roundabouts. But again, I already said, I think we went overboard on the roundabouts and where we could have just handled a standard stop sign intersection would have been fine.
Sure. I mean, they're mostly, you know, retired firefighters, emergency responders. I, it wasn't, it wasn't anybody who really made the decisions, but, um, Pam, do you have any rejoinder or do you want, do you want us to move on or?
Oh, we, we, we can move on.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, um, we moved to vastly different topics. So in the last couple of podcasts that we've done now, we've had a number of different claims being made about Encinitas's crime rate. On the one hand, um, when I talked to Tony and Cindy, Tony said crime is down. Cindy insisted to the opposite effect. Jeff and Michael both said that crime is up in the city. And what the numbers show is that since for between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, crime went up in Encinitas by thirty-one percent. However, uh, the Sandag report for the six month period that came out this year shows that crime has decreased five percent since last year. Now that's for a six month period. However, compared to twenty eighteen, the city's overall crime rate has risen six percent. So a lot of numbers being bounced around here, but I just want to start with, with you, Pam, is, is crime up or down? And more importantly, what are we going to do about it?
Well, I think when we, when we look at statistics, it's important to look at also the actual like numbers because, you know, moving from one to two is fifty percent, right? Or is it a hundred percent? So, so, you know, you can wait, when you're moving from like one to three, you know, so if it, it would be different if it was fifty to a hundred, right? So we're, we're, we're in low digits on the types of, on crimes that we have. And I know that things are, you know, getting publicized and things, and it's good that the, the public is aware and that people are, are being vigilant. And so I think we need to support law enforcement to do what it is that they need to do to, to keep the streets safe, to keep, um, to keep people, you know, if you do something wrong and you hurt another person, you should be held responsible for that. And, um, but as far as like what the city council can do about that, maybe it's, I, Stacy was mentioning putting in more, um, more cameras around so that, so that maybe that that's a deterrent for people to, to not engage in illegal activity, you know, if, if it's drug dealing or, you know, whatever it may be. I mean, what happened to the, um, you know, to the, putting the sheriff substation downtown? Like that was a plan and then now that didn't, that didn't end up happening. So I, I don't, I don't really, I don't really know what happened with that. I don't know the history of that, but just thinking about that the downtown is the epicenter of where all this is going on. And I'm not going to criminalize unhoused people and say that it's unhoused people's fault because I'm just not going to go there with that because we know that there's different elements going on. And so that's just really unfair for people to do. But mostly I would say that we need to, we need to increase, you know, go around and increase the lighting that, so that people feel more safe when they're walking around and allow law enforcement to do its job.
Real quick follow-up question to Pam. There's been a lot of talk about Encinitas having an enforcement problem from especially the last two candidates we interviewed, um, in terms of, you know, uh, certain crimes, um, you know, sort of a hands-off approach by our law enforcement deputies. And do you sort of feel that? Do you sense that? Or do you think this is a non-issue?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a non-issue. I'm also not a big fan of like heavy-handed policing either, because I understand the, the issues with police brutality and with, um, violation of people's civil rights and that it's really important for, um, for those to be respected and, and for, um, you know, for folks to, to have their, their individual circumstances looked at. So, you know, if somebody's brandishing a weapon, I don't think that the, that, that the police should be like, oh, it's all right, don't worry about it, right? But, you know, if somebody's, if somebody's like urinating in public, maybe they need to get a ticket, right? And so why wouldn't you give someone a ticket? Or like, I'm thinking about like the kids riding around on bikes, like let's stop them and say, hey, you're not being safe. Like that type of thing could get a warning. But, you know, I, I, I do agree that, that crime needs to be, or ordinances need to be enforced and that when crimes happen, they need to be handled. And, um, and it, that involves us fully supporting our law enforcement to do their job.
Sure. So for you, Bruce, uh, again, the original question was sort of, um, first of all, the, the premise of this whole conversation is do you believe that crime is in fact up or that it's down? And second of all, uh, you know, what do you think's behind this? And what do you think about this question of enforcement, the heavy-handedness versus the sort of hands-off approach?
So I think you, you stated both reports. So there are two reports. One's the April twenty twenty-two Sandag forty-two report, forty-two year report on crime. Overall violent crime, long-term trend is headed down, has been, but it, it blipped up some and mostly, uh, lighter crimes have gone up. And they, they're the ones in that report, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one went up thirty-one percent. There's an interim, an October twenty-second that was just released that for the six months that shows it was down, but after the thirty-one, if you take the whole, I think you said it was up overall six percent, taking the raw numbers. So it's up, no doubt about it. The report says so. And people that say, yeah, if you have very short sighted, you go, well, last six months, this, this hour, we haven't had a crime, so it's, it's way down, it's zero, right? No, you can't do that. You have to look at the overall trend and the overall trend in the last couple of years is up. The other thing you have to note is that it understates the crimes that are not getting prosecuted. And what has happened in the last several years is petty crimes. Uh, we had Prop, what was it, forty-one or forty-seven that basically decriminalized, uh, uh, up to nine hundred and fifty dollars of petty theft?
Yes.
And so those are all not getting prosecuted. And, and when I went, I went on a ride along with the, uh, with the sheriff and I had quite a few conversations with, with, uh, one of the sergeants, with one of the deputies and, and even with one of the lieutenants. And, uh, it's very clear that they do not go and ticket people, they do not pull them in if they don't think that the county will prosecute it. And many of these petty thefts. So one of the examples I saw in my ride around is a homeless person, unfortunately, taking some cushions and, uh, from one of the local stores and running off with them. And, and when the sheriff, we walked down the street, drove down the street, saw her, she dropped them immediately and ran, ran in. But that, he was never going to even book her. But she reacted as though she was, he was. And it, and it took like four or five deputies doing nothing but standing while she, uh, did all of her act, I guess is the best way to put it, to kind of keep them away from her. And they were very gentle the whole time and in fact brought a, a female deputy in because she was locked in the, in the bathroom. But it was in an interesting encounter to watch what they're having to deal with and the fact that how, uh, in this case, this one homeless person or, or unsheltered, I'm not sure whether she was homeless or unsheltered, whether she, how she used her defensive mechanisms to kind of hold off the police and, and how that they, they told her, I heard, heard him say it several times, we're not going to press charges or anything, you know, you just need to return the stuff. That was it. That's all they wanted. That's all the P, the owner of the store wanted too. So in, in that case, what's happening is we're understating the, the, uh, crimes because what would have been reported as a crime ten years ago is not being reported now. So even if it is up six percent, truth be told, it's probably up even more. And I think anecdotally, you ask anybody on the street, uh, and, and how many minor assaults we see now, even Tony Kranz on our, on our council was, was assaulted, right? That's never happened before. So I would say it's definitely up. What was the rest of the question?
Just, well, I, I think it's worth like noting too, like what you just mentioned is sort of this like, you know, it's a state law, Prop forty-seven.
Yeah, thank you.
But at the local level, uh, we have, I, I'm just curious, at the local level though, what, what can we do? Like what, what are some local solutions that don't require us, you know, changing law at the state level, which maybe we should do or maybe we shouldn't do, but what can the city council do now?
Well, our, our current city council likes to lobby for things and, and quite a few different issues. This is one they haven't lobbied for. I would, I would want to lobby for this. So I think we need to change some of these laws. If it means putting a new proposition on there to take the nine hundred and fifty dollars and drop it down to a much more, uh, less profitable, because there are, you know, literally gangs in, in certain major cities that are organized and they go in and each steal nine hundred dollars and then they drop it off. And, and, you know, it, it's caused, what the net, net is, it's caused some stores to close in major metropolitan areas and, and underserved communities, they actually close and it makes a bad problem worse as far as serving that community. So it's having, again, unintended consequences. So I think our city should be lobbying to, to enforce our ordinance, as much like Pamela was saying. So I, I agree with that. And, uh, but it has to be done gently, it has to be done within the law, but you have to have laws, enforcement, you can't just have laws and you can't have enforcement that goes beyond the laws or is needlessly harsh or, or unfair or, or dealt in, in unfair ways. So.
Pam, I want to get back to a comment you made earlier, which was that, um, sort of, again, with the heavy-handed versus the sort of hands-off approach, uh, you mentioned that you really, um, resent the, the notion that we should be, you know, criminalizing the unhoused for, you know, sort of just going about their lives. for, you know, sort of just going about their lives. But I am curious because this has been a debate in the first two podcasts, the, the connection between homelessness and crime. I want to talk about that for everyone, both of you, like are these two issues very closely tied in your view? And, you know, what, what is the proper approach to sort of balancing, again, the heavy handed and the hands off approach when it comes to these sort of quality of life crimes that a lot of people do associate with our unhoused population?
So I think that if there's the, the crimes that people are referring to, like when they say crime is up, it's not what unhoused people are likely doing, right? Because I think what, what unhoused people might be doing is public urination, defecation in parks, camping or just sleeping overnight in places where they're not allowed, you know, where the ordinance says you may not do that. And, and we've had a couple of encounters. I, I totally acknowledge that. I don't think it's rampant, however, that, that, that people are being attacked by unhoused people. I just really don't. And, and, and I think it's, it's that the couple of encounters are being overblown in order to vilify the unhoused and, and try to get the, the sheriffs to, you know, kick them out of the city. Well, that's not us being a good neighbor to the other cities that we kicked them out to. And I think that we have, you know, a homeless action plan that works with the sheriff and works with the county. And, and that we can do more work with, with other cities that surround us to, to handle this humanitarian crisis that's going on. I mean, clearly people are suffering, people are struggling. And, and the Encinitas I know is not, is not mean and hateful. It's compassionate and caring and operates from a place of, of love and abundance versus fear and scarcity. I just see this fear and scarcity narrative being, being overplayed and it's, and it's, it's resulting in some really, some negativity that's not necessary.
Sure. Back to you, Bruce. The conflation of the homelessness and crime issues. Is it fair to, to say that you, you've said crime is rising, that's your stance? So is it fair to link that to the homelessness issue? But secondly, I want to ask about the city council's current approach on, on homelessness and the homeless action plan and your thoughts on that?
Yeah. So I'm going to answer the first one. You may have to repeat the one to me.
Sure.
So first of all, I think we're conflating homelessness with drug addiction.
Okay.
And, and I, I think the homeless are not the per se, are not the, the cause of crime. That you have to look at the surveys of how many homeless are drug addicted, psychotic or alcohol addicted, and most of them are drug addicted with some psychosis, from what I've read. The numbers I've seen in San Francisco, 70%, Southern California, two thirds. Talking with the head of Alpha Project, I have a friend that works in Alpha Project and, and they've, they've got what, 30 programs, locations throughout the county, been doing it over 30 years. And I had a long discussion with him and he pretty much confirmed a, a lot of the stuff I had read as far as, he, he said two thirds of the homeless that, that is his target audience are drug and alcohol addicted. So I like to look at it not as being unhoused or homeless, but whether you have a population that is sober, down on their luck, whatever it might be, they could be families, juveniles, kids, sober veterans. That group are not the ones you see on the street. They go out and they seek the rather available services, both that the, the police will direct them to, but also the, the outreach and the homeless action plan. I forget the name of the team, but the team goes. Yeah, yeah, exactly. They go out and, and get the people to that. So it's not that one third, it's the two thirds that are causing the problems. And they're not, they're not stealing stuff because they're homeless. They're probably doing it to support a drug habit. Right? And so, and, and some may not be, but I think the majority, there are no majority. There are enough of them, the ones you see causing the problems, the ones that get caught doing the illicit behavior, the illegal defecating in public, minor assaults or even intimidation, panhandling where they are intimidating the person, not, not simply panhandling. They, they're almost emboldened and empowered. I, I tell people, it was just about like four months ago, I came at eight o'clock at night, I came out of CVS near Ralph's. I'm 6'2", 260. I'm not a small guy. I had a homeless guy, I'm wearing a mask, he's not, in my face demanding a ride to his, and he was pointing kind of shakily up the hill towards the shelter to his hotel is what he said. And I'm like, well, there's no hotel up there and, and you know, and he was aggressive in my face. And I kept thinking, this was my wife or my daughter standing here and he was this aggressive. They, they would have been intimidated, you know, I, I was and I'm a big guy. And he was a lot smaller than I was, but in the end, you know, I, I said no, because he was not wearing a mask for one. And it was, it was, it was telling, I thought, how emboldened he is. And, and he's part of the problem. Now, he didn't do anything illegal and other than stand in the middle of the street and kind of screw up traffic a little bit there while he was talking to me, I was, I was on the sidewalk. But it was, it was bizarre. And, and that's, that's me and I keep seeing other examples. So I do think I never ran into these kinds of problems personally or through other people. So I definitely think crime is up and it's got more to do with, with drug habits. Now, so what the head of Alpha Project told me is that of that two thirds, remember that? That to me is the problem population. How do we get them into treatment? He goes out and looks for the ones that want to be in treatment. He calls them unicorns. They're so rare. And they, most, most of that group would rather do their drugs and, and live on the street by, by whatever means possible. And one of the books I read went through and looked at the mortality rate of people that are, are put into housing first and allowed to continue doing their drugs. And the mortality rate of on the street versus in housing first is equal. So what we're doing in the case of housing first, and, and there's an interim process where contingent care, right? That's what we need to do. We need to have shelters with contingent care and move them up the continuum to housing. But this idea of putting them in housing first, letting them continue doing drugs, and this is what San Francisco, LA does quite a bit of, it's a, it's, it's a Portland too. I don't think it works and the mortality rates prove it. So from that respect, I, I think we do have a crime problem. I think it's connected with drugs and not with necessarily homelessness per se.
Sure. And you were during the game?
Yeah, I would say that the model that, that Bruce is talking about, that I think the city has been in, part of the homeless action plan has been in communication with Center for Community Solutions that works in Vista and I have a relative who has gone through that and it's an amazing program. It really, it does help, it helps people.
Sure.
And I think the guy that founded that used to work for Bob McElroy that I talked to.
Okay, okay.
It's a small world.
What about you, Bruce? Are you pleased with the homeless action plan as it stands? What else could the city be doing?
I, I think we need to get to a point, like I think what I said previously. Basically, we need to get to a point where we can enforce some of our laws. And there's a Supreme Court decision that says you have to offer shelter and have enough beds and if you get practical beds, I think is the word in the, in the ruling to, before you can enforce your ban on sleeping like in public parks. And, and I'm a firm believer that we need to get the public parks back so that children can play safely in the parks. There, there isn't, you know, human feces, there aren't needles, there aren't paraphernalia left there. And so, because the, the people that live here have as much right to that park as, as a homeless does. But I, you know, they're, we're going to have to do more as a city to make sure we don't let our parks and public areas get completely taken over.
Sure, absolutely.
But in order to do that, we have to provide, provide the alternative.
Sure. Well, it's five after six. Pam, do you have time for one more topic or?
Sure, one more topic.
Okay, all right. Well, since it did happen today, we have the lottery winners for Major L. Four different businesses were selected for rights to sell marijuana in the city. So I just want to address with both of you, first of all, do you each support Major L? And secondly, what do you think about sort of just the future of the cannabis industry in Encinitas? And sort of what the city's role is in terms of guiding that, you know, mitigating possibly some negative effects, concerns that residents have, but I'll start with you Pam, just, you know, first, do you, do you support it in, in principle?
Yes, I do support it. I mean, it's, people are gonna buy it in Sereno Valley or buy it in Vista. Why not buy it here and, and have some of that money stay here? I mean, to me, it's, it's an illegal, it's a legal substance now. It's just like alcohol. We need to educate our children about, about pot, the way that we educate them about alcohol. And, and folks need to take their own responsibility for that. And, and so personally, I'm, I'm for it. I've seen the way that, that medical marijuana helps cancer patients and, you know, and lots of people with anxiety. And I mean, I, I have no problem with it.
Sure. And just, I realize I should have defined what we're talking about before I got into it. But just for our listeners, Major L establishes the cannabis sales tax at rates of four to seven percent of gross receipts for retail cannabis businesses and one to 4% for non-retail cannabis businesses. And it charges $2 to $10 per canopy square foot for cultivation, just so the formal definition. But Bruce, again, do you support it? And secondly, sort of what's the city's role in sort of guiding the future of this business?
Okay, as far as Major L, it's, it's just whether or not you want to bound the tax between four and seven percent and, and the other percentage. And, and yes, I support that. It, it will help pay for the added costs and there will be added costs to manage cannabis businesses growing and distribution, sales in the city of Encinitas. So you know, security, and I mean, city services from the police. So yeah, I do, I do support it as a reasonable tax and, and there's a nexus there between the tax and, and the funds needed. As far as, what was the rest of the question? So I answered.
Just sort of the city's role in guiding the future of this business. Now, this is happening.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, we've had these four lucky winners. So what's, what does the city do moving forward to sort of mitigate some of the negative effects and sort of guide the future of this?
Well, it depends on what part of the operation, you know, obviously much like alcohol, you have to mitigate the, the use of it right near the outlet and the concentration, overconcentration. In the case of alcohol, I don't think the city is, has limited the concentration. Downtown 101, the alcohol control board for the state has guidelines and, and they historically have crime curves that once you go beyond a certain concentration, there's a knee in the curve and crime rates go up. Downtown 101, we're nine times that concentration level for alcohol. So I guess I would like to see that better controlled. And if we're going to allow the cannabis, that we don't fall in the same trap and we control the concentration so that it's reasonable, we, we should have the services available. But let's not, let's not go so high that we go into any curve where we end up above the knee in the curve causing crime. And I think, I think we're there downtown right now for alcohol. The, what was the other point I was going to make? You had, you, on the question with.
Like what's the city's role?
City's role, yeah. Oh, the other half was growing. Like if you go back, we had on the Actor property, we had a hemp growing, not, not cannabis THC type stuff, but hemp. Very similar, similar plant. And that brings all sorts of problems when you have it in a city next to residents. And in this case, in the end, it turned out that they were using a pesticide illegally. It was wafting out, it actually reacted with humidity of the evening. So every night our humidity went up and would settle into the neighborhood and was causing all sorts of health problems. And it turns out it was actually true and they got cited for it. The city did not do a very good job of, of following that or monitoring it or even reacting to complaints. So what can the city do is have an effective code enforcement, effective investigative. It actually took somebody from outside the city, from the county to come in and really find the evidence and, and shut it down. So, and, and we are in almost an identical plant. It's the same species plant, right? It's just different, different treatment subspecies, I guess.
Sure. So Pam, did you have any rejoinder comment or?
Oh, no, I, I, I would agree, like we have to be on top of, of any pollutants that are going to be causing health hazards. And, and since the, the type of, of plant that's going to be growing is one that people are going to ingest, that's just, it's going to be different. Because there, people aren't interested in putting cancer causing chemicals on things that people are going to ingest.
Sure. So before I let you guys go, and I know you got to run Pam, but I like to do this. We, we do a lot of debates here, a lot of back and forth, but I like to do it where we ask each candidate to say something you admire or respect about the other. Bruce, we'll start with you.
Oh boy, you can put me on the spot. Well, I don't know Pamela that well, but I certainly respect your, your education and your having PhD in feminist studies. I think that's applaud, you know, very good.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, I would say I respect your dedication. I love how much time you've put in to all of this work that you've done and just, you know, a wonderful example of civic engagement. And that's something that I really am championing. And so on that, Ben, I really hope that we'll be able to have Stacy and Dan chime in on all of these issues as well.
Me too. Well, I really appreciate you Bruce and you Pam. Thanks for coming on. I know this isn't easy to be put on the spot like this, but I love these conversations. I think they do voters a good service. And yeah, this has been another episode. I'd like to thank our team at Maxxux Media again for helping sponsor and Barn Time Productions for allowing us to have this wonderful venue. You can visit them at barntimemusic.com. But yeah, until next time, stay classy, San Diego.